Good evening, everyone. Welcome. I'm going to call the June 18th, 2024 regular scheduled board meeting to order. I've asked Commissioner Hale to lead us in the prayer and Commissioner White to lead us in the pledge. So if you would, please all stand.
If you can, please, if you can. Bow your heads, please. Lord, we thank you for this day. Thank you for the opportunity to come here and together and do the work of Swanee County, Lord. We pray that you'll be with us. You'll guide our minds and our hearts and our decisions, Lord. Lord, pray that you'll watch over us, Lord, watch over our community. There's many here that we know need your blessings. They need your help with recovery and certain things going on in their life. And there may be things we don't know, Lord, but we know you know those needs and you can take care of those. Lord, be with our community, our nation, our armed forces, our first responders. And Lord, most of all, be with each and every one of us as we are all sinners, Lord. And we need you and only you can deliver us from that. We pray all this in your humble and holy name, Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its colored旗帜. One nation, on the God, in the middle of the world.
That sounded good, y'all.
Yeah.
Good crowd participation there. We'll start with the first item on the agenda, which is our approval of minutes. We have the June 4th, 2024 regular meeting, the June 6th, 2024, the tabulation meeting of, I believe, of a bid opening, and the minutes from the June 11th, 2024, tabulation meeting. Any questions, comments, or concerns by commissioners on those minutes?
None.
So move. Have a motion by Commissioner Perkins to accept.
Second.
Second by Commissioner White, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero, Mr. Clerk. Next item on the agenda is public concerns and comments. Anyone present here at the public wishing to speak? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Welcome, sir.
Thank you.
Name that. There you go.
Moses Clepper, 14581, 102nd pass, Live Oak. You know, a little while back, I know we're fixing to change or hand the baton off on the fire department. And a little while back, there was a question about doing a fiscal audit. I hadn't heard any more about that. And I just wanted to make sure they got notice paid to it. I mean, there's no allegations or anything. It's just a physical, responsible thing to do. Whoever's coming into that office needs to have a clean slate. And I wouldn't want to take that office without it being done. So that may be our end works. I hope so. It'd make me real happy to learn that. And the... Well, probably the rest of it's going to be in the general. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clepper. Thank you for your comment. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak tonight? All right, seeing none, we will move along. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Commissioners, or anything that you guys, I didn't ask you before the meeting. I normally do that so that I'm more prepared. But is there any items you guys wish to pull for discussion? Hearing none, we have items two through 15 on the consent agenda for business purposes. Any questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second it. I have a motion to approve by Commissioner White. I have a second by Commissioner Mobley. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries five zero. Okay, so we are on, it is 5:35. We have two time-specific items tonight. I'm going to start with item number 16. And that reads, "At 5:35 PM or soon thereafter, as the matter can be heard, hold a public hearing to consider special permit for temporary use request number SPTU-24-05-01 by American Promotional Events Doing Business as TNT Fireworks to be granted a special permit for temporary use under section 14.10 of the Swanee County Land Development Regulations for a fireworks tent sale to be held starting June 24, 2024, through July 7, 2024, on properties on commercial intensive." Mr. Ron Meeks.
Do you swear or affirm testament you give this cause to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so how about you, God?
I do. Mr. Chairman, board members, this is probably about the 15th, 16th time that this application has been before the commission through the years. TNT Fireworks holds an event where they do a fireworks tent sale in the months of January and July annually. This has been ongoing for at least probably seven, eight years now. So the request has been for the placement of the temporary fireworks tent sale from June 24, 2024, to July 7, 2024. And the location of the tent would be in the Walmart parking lot. So you have a resolution as part of your packet for approval. If the board has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. If not, I would enter the file into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Meeks.
I just filed admitted as well.
Thanks, sir. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Meeks? I believe this is a, this has been going on for years, years.
Seven, eight years.
Yes, sir.
January and July, every year.
I believe I saw the tent maybe going up today there in front of Walmart. There's a tent sale there for the fireworks for July 4th. Yes, sir.
And they go through Fire Marshal Jim White. He does permit as well and inspection before they open.
Yes, sir. We think we've been through these mental times.
Mr. Chairman, it's an annual event. There are no problems with that. Just a move.
Yes, well, we got to run through this. That's why I was asking Commissioner White, making sure I was going through the right thing. So we got to open forward a public comment since it's a special permit. Any other, but thank you for that. I'll hold that. Anybody, any other board members have any questions for Mr. Meeks? Seeing none, we will open forward to public comment. Anybody here wishing to speak on this in regards to this special permit? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment. Anyone else wishing to speak in regards to this special permit? Seeing none, we will close public comment. Any board discussion? Hearing none, I do know I have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Perkins. So I have a second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero, Mr. Clerk. I will close that public hearing. So we have another time-specific item. That is item number 17. So I will read that now. "At 5:35 PM or soon thereafter, as the matter can be heard, hold a public hearing to consider special permit for temporary use request number SPTU-24-05-02 by James Cornet to be granted a special permit for temporary use under section 14.10 of the Swanee County Land Development Regulations to relocate primitive camping, overflow parking, and event staging at the Spirit of the Swanee to adjacent property due to the storm damage, due to storm damage for various events scheduled not to exceed five years on properties on agricultural one, A1, and environmentally sensitive areas ESA-2." Mr. Ron Meeks.
Mr. Chairman, board members, most of you will remember that soon after we had Hurricane Adelia, we had a request from the Spirit of the Swanee Music Park to relocate some of their primitive tent camping and event staging to other areas of the property that they own that is contiguous to the park proper that they currently hold their events and have their camping there now. That cleanup process has been an ongoing process. And not long ago, I was still out there and they still have some damage that they're still working on. And then we had the, kind of the freak of nature storm that came through not long ago and took out some additional trees. So we've got additional cleanup. So had a conversation with Robin. They had talked about doing another request on a temporary use permit. That section of the LDRs of the temporary use permit allows the commission to approve for a period of time up to five years. So they were good with that. We just put the five years in there. If the board doesn't want to do the five years, we can reduce the timeframe. But it's just a temporary relocation to utilize those adjacent properties for primitive camping, event staging, and some overflow parking. So you have a resolution, part of your packet is written for approval. If the board has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. If not, then we would as well admit this file into evidence as well.
Admitted as one.
Thank you, Mr. Meeks. Any board questions of Mr. Meeks?
No, sir.
Okay, seeing none, I will open the floor to public comment. Just same format as the previous permit. Anybody present from the per, from the public wishing to speak in regards to this special permit? Seeing none. Oh, I'm sorry. Welcome, come on, come to the podium and, yes, ma'am, name, protocols, name and add, say it when you get here, please. Name, name and address for the record.
Stacy Harvey.
Ma'am, if you could please raise your red hand.
Oh, I'm sorry, he's got to swear again.
Do you swear or affirm testament you give this cause to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so how about you, God?
Yes, sir. All right, so I'm Stacy Harvey. My address is 2821 from 103rd Road, Live Oak, Florida. I've been in Live Oak for 40 years, you know, since I've been born. So with that, where they're wanting to put their property or like the tent camping and all that stuff and everything.
Mr. Chairman.
I live down that dirt road.
Ms. Harvey, would you speak into the mic? They're recording it, so there's folks that watch it. You're not doing anything wrong. They're recording it, so online it'll be better if you, there you go, thank you.
So I live, you know, in that area and we live on a dirt road. It gets dusty, it's horrible when it rains, it's all washed out. And then that's only my concern with my vehicle and stuff, having to drive. And then last year, they had their toilet paper and poop like all down the fence line and all that stuff. And so I reached out and it was cleaned up immediately, you know, immediately, you know, when said that and everything. So, but that's just little smallville issues that we have to deal with and stuff, so. Other than that, it's good.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Harvey.
Think you have a representative from the Spirit of the Swanee if they would.
Ms. Peavy, would you like to speak to those briefly? Welcome, name and add, there you go.
Do you swear or affirm testament you give this cause to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so how about you, God?
I do.
State your name.
Tina Peavy. Hi, I'm the general manager at Spirit of the Swanee. We have discussed your concerns, Ms. Harvey. I've discussed that with James as well, and we will definitely try to do a better job this year. We'll work better with our porta pott company, have more porta pots there, and put some additional fencing up there as well to address our concerns.
Good deal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone have any questions, Watts?
Mr. Chairman, I didn't have the opportunity to speak to Ms. Stacy, she's my neighbor. But James did reach out to me as well about Ms. Stacy's concerns. And he even mentioned about maybe moving them away from that fence line, not letting them be up on that fence line. And he gave me a bunch of other things he was going to do to make sure that.
Yeah, we'll have more lighting as well. And we can put barricades up so they can't go past.
But I agree with Ms. Stacy. The only thing I think is maybe you guys should just pave that road for us. That'd be great.
Well, it's not that I don't disagree with that.
Well, I tried, but anyhow. But he did reach out because he spoke to her and he did reach out to me, so, yeah.
Anyone else have anything for Ms. Peavy? Thank you, Ms. Peavy. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak on this particular special permit? Seeing none, I will close public comment. Any further board discussion on this matter?
None.
Seeing none. I have a, I'll take a motion by Commissioner Mobley to approve and a second by Commissioner Perkins. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero, Mr. Clerk. I will close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meeks. Next item on the agenda is constitutional officer items. Are there any constitutional officers present wishing to speak? Seeing none, we will move along. Any staff items, any staff? Mr. Ferry, welcome, sir. Could you update us on the Florida State North Carolina Bay?
So I can get back to the game, I mean, the meeting. We hit back-to-back home runs in the top of the ninth, so it is the bottom of the ninth and we're up nine to five. But we know how we hold leaves lately.
Don't know.
Anyway, I'm here for a brief update on Parks and Recreation, not baseball. It's hot out there, in case you didn't know. It's hot and humid. And so anyway, just appreciate our guys, the county guys that are out working in this heat. They're, Gene and his guys right now are at Royal Springs. It's currently closed so that we can work on the road, paving the road going in, and asphalt milling, parking lot over to the boat ramp, making some improvements there. So when it does reopen, we can charge that $5 per vehicle and have a good summer if the river will continue going down. So anyway, the spring is closed. We anticipate it opening up in a couple more weeks once they complete that construction. Little River opened back up today. It is still high, it's still pretty brown. It's starting to clear up right around the spring boil, so hopefully that'll keep pushing out to the river if we can, if we can keep it coming down. Just a couple of the project updates. Charles Springs, the floating boat dock out there, we just worked out the contract with the contractor, Saltwater Builders. So we'll get that and bring that to the board next month and get that executed. The Greenway, they're about 75% done, I'd say. I don't know, maybe Tori knows a little better, but they're moving along. The town of Brantford downtown trailhead, they've got the lights installed down there for the fourth. And so that's going to be a nice addition to the trailhead and make it safer down there. And they're starting to work on the bridge, so that's kind of a neat project there or, you know, element of the project down there to cross the itch at Tuckney, so.
Mr. Ferry, that bridge is going to be covered, right?
It's going to be covered.
Yeah.
Fenst and covered, yep. Keep people from jumping off it like you did when you were a teenager.
You didn't see that.
Our FDAX, our livestock building at the Coliseum, we're out to bid now. And I think that closes first of July or July 10th or 12th, somewhere in there. So hoping to get a couple contractors for the demo of taking those buildings down and then we'll start on the construction piece. And then, you know, we're still working with the district, water management district on Telford, and they're asking hard about Swanee Springs. So we've made some visits out to Swanee Springs as well. And we'd like to talk about that. I don't know that we need a workshop necessarily, but during budget process, let's talk about that some and what that looks like on our end to help maintain that on a daily basis and touch that and pick up trash and, you know, all those things that go into keeping that, that nice. So they're not in the park management business, you know, they're in the conservation business. So it might be, might be something good for us to consider along with Telford, so keep that in mind. Just a couple of other things quickly, sorry. Working with the town of Brantford and the city of Live Oak also on their 4th of July events coming up, just supporting resources. And budget prep is here now, so we're all scrambling around the office to complete those and get those to Keith on, on time, almost on time. I think they were due yesterday. We did get an insurance check recently for the roof at the office at the sports complex where our, the rec department offices had some damage on that May 10th freak storm that came through. So we're looking at replacing our roof out there. Mark and his guys, appreciate Dennis, they're out there laying concrete and fixing our ramp up to the office because we took some damage from a tree there too, so. And then the rest is just summer programs, you know, 75 kids a day at day camp, running around. The pool, we've had four or five saves at the pool from kids that, you know, I won't say it's a drowning. It's not CPR involved, but, you know, the pool's a busy place. Swim team, swim lessons, over 100 kids with swim lessons so far this summer, so we still got another 100 to do. And just had a couple, had one tournament a couple weeks ago, had 38 teams in town for the Bay Brook districts from T-ball all the way up to 15. Congratulations, our 10-year-old boys, I think, won the All-Star Tournament in districts, so they're moving on to state. And then we, we host the 13, the 16-year-old in July. Another 15 teams coming in for a state tournament, so. Anyway, a lot going on, busy time.
Mr. Ferry, how much did we take in in Little River last year when we?
And the amount of time it was open, because it was closed a little bit with the river as well, but it was about 40,000 for those months that we were open, but that was not a full year.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hale. Some of these potential parks that we may take, or springs we may take over, I've been asked, and it's a great idea. Any, any looking at maybe having one of those, I don't know what you call the apparatus, for the special needs or the handicap to get them into the water and out of the water?
For access.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, we'd have to, you know, we have something at the pool, so I'd have to see if there's something we could, you know, retrofit or manufacture, or maybe they make something, you know, for the spring. But definitely something we can, we can look at and should look at.
Yeah.
I'll make a note of that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hale. Any other commissioners for Mr. Ferry?
Thank you, guys.
I believe we're on staff items. Any other staff present tonight wishing to speak? All right, seeing none, we will move along to commissioner items. Any commissioner items?
None.
Seeing none, we will move to county attorney. Mr. Attorney.
Nothing this evening, Mr. Chair.
Well, that's shocking. Consultants, any consultants present wishing to speak? It's a quiet bunch tonight. General business, we'll move along to item number 18. Under general business, discuss with possible board action and agreement with Cherry Beckett for cost recovery services. Mr. Greg Scott.
Cherry Beckett was brought to our attention by Michael Grissom, Mike Grissom, our county lobbyist. What this company does is go in to look at our finances to see what we may have overlooked or might have been missed from CARES money or ARPA money or other items we could have received from federal or state money that we didn't receive. Through that process, they'll be looking, taking a little bit deeper dive into our operational costs, be looking at all the constitutional officers, budgets closer, our budget closer, to look and see there's opportunities there that we can use to match federal, mainly federal dollars, more effectively. When you're looking at true cost of matches, there's things that we might overlook that we could add to that. We feel like that this is going to be, produce more revenue for the county. There is a fee and then a percentage of return if they find money. But we really feel like they're going to be able to find money, it's going to help us in the long run to help us match bigger and better grants. And so my recommendations for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Any board members have any questions for Mr. Scott? I spoke to Mr. Scott about this earlier today and he kind of explained, which we've talked multiple times about this over the last few weeks, you know, there may be an opportunity there. And it was my understanding, Mr. Scott, and correct me if I'm wrong, but even if they do not find anything with the data that they create, I mean, there will be a lesson learned in that maybe for us moving forward on potentially how we, how we store that, how we collect it, how we present it, and maybe better prepare us for future grant fundings.
Exactly, and that's, that's probably the best thing is, as we look, as we look at how we, you know, organize our, our matches, be able to find more revenue to put toward that. So I really think that'll, that number will grow for the county that we have, we'll have to match as much.
Yeah, I mean, because my concern was that we were, you know, buying a $20,000 lottery ticket, basically, with the opportunity that, I mean, we may find some funds. But, but actually with the data that they, that they leave us with, there'll be a lesson learned in there that will have a certain some value to, even if they shouldn't find any.
Right, and it'll be a multiple year. I mean, it'll, it'll help us learn a lot about ourselves. And again, there may be, there may be some resources, I mentioned the constitutional officers. There may be other grants we haven't even looked at before through other agencies that, that give us some different opportunities. But there may be some grants for the constitutional officers, and that's what we want to do, is do it across the board, all the agencies.
Yeah, so that, yeah, exactly. And I'm glad you brought that up, but yeah, it would also include some of the constitutionals too. So, you know, my concern was buying a $20,000 lottery ticket. But after, after talking to him in a little more detail, like, there's a lesson to be learned here with some valuable data there. So I, I was way more comfortable with it after, after, you know, having a lengthy conversation with Mr. Scott. So I just wanted to share that with you guys in case y'all hadn't heard that. Any other questions for Mr. Scott?
No, sir.
Have a motion, you got a motion down there? Have a motion to approve by Commissioner Hale.
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner White. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero, Mr. Clerk. Believe we are on item number 19. Discuss with possible board, board action to determination of rates for the solid waste assessment program for fiscal, fiscal year 2024, 2025. Mr. Greg Scott.
So as you, as you know, every year we revisit our assessments. This is the solid waste, and we ran the numbers on what our costs are. As you're aware, our increase every year goes up, or our amount for solid waste goes up every year because of what we pay to haul and to have it put in the landfill in Georgia. We just ran the numbers and so currently our rate is $225 a household. And currently, we subsidize the solid waste by one, just over a million dollars out of general revenue to help cover that cost. So you'll see other forecasts for other, other numbers if you'd like to look at that. But just, just give a set of fee for, for that.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Commissioner White.
Mr. Scott, that million-dollar deficit we're running in solid waste, that doesn't include any compactors or adding to any of?
No, we, we have included in the budget for this past year a small amount for compactors. We, as you're aware, we contracted Mr. Locklear to do some studies for us. We received the numbers from him on what some costs are. We would like to talk more about that during the budget workshops. And we think that we, I already see a plan in place in my head. We just got to make sure the numbers all work out. But we are tied to that contract for a period of time that we have currently. So we have some time to start preparing for doing things different, whether we keep the same outsource of the landfill or use a different one, the plan would work either way, so.
I had a commissioner from Gilchrist County call me this week and I was asking him what they were doing with their garbage and whatnot, and they were using compactors. And he said it was, even though their assessment's higher than ours is currently, he said it was saving them quite a bit of money by using those compactors. So you may want to reach out to them as well.
I will, I will. You know, just in, working through the budget workshop or budget meeting we had the other day, I started just seeing numbers kind of roll in my head, if we did this, this, and this. I mean, it's like, I think we got a strategy in the works, so. And I don't want to say too much, but.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Scott or recommendations?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Perkins.
Mr. Scott, what is the, the time that we have on that contract, you're talking about?
Two and a half more years.
Do we have other sources of that to beat out to? The other companies?
We do have other options.
At the end of the term.
Yeah, right.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Any other commissioners or recommendations?
I'm good with leaving it where it's at for the time being, because I would like to see what the compactors, how that's going to affect us, because I know we, I think we budgeted for at least two of those.
Yeah, I think, I would agree with you, Commissioner Hale. I think that, as Commissioner White said, I think that the compactors, Mr. Hancock, I'll be right there. I think it's evident that eventually the compactors, to create less liquid you're hauling, less, less airspace. You know, you get, yeah, less fluff in the truck to maximize the load. I mean, I think at some point, it's just imminent, that's where you got to go.
The commissioner from Gilchrist County told me that not only did the compactor save them money, but they also went, they also went in-house with all their transportation. And he said that saved them a pile of money. And I know we've kind of shied away from that, but it may be something we need to look at as, as well. Or talk to them about it and see what they're doing.
We'll check in that, see if that's an option to get out of that.
Well, I think that we're tied to that transportation in this current contract, is the way I read it, so.
The one thing that got me kind of thinking too, is we renewed these garbage trucks that are very expensive. And if we use a different type of vehicle to transport garbage, it's much more cost-effective.
Yes, the rollback with the compactor can versus a front-loaded garbage truck with all the electronics and the hydraulics that those have are much more economical to operate. But it take, it takes money to get there to save, spend, spend it to make it.
Right.
Spend it to save it. Mr. Hancock, welcome, sir, name and address.
Beau Hancock, 6135 Wiggins Road. Just a quick question. If y'all take action tonight and y'all approve. If y'all take action tonight, and y'all approve the rates, can you go back and change them later, after the budget workshops and the studies are done and y'all reviewed it?
I would ask the county attorney, but I do believe there's a method to amend those or to clerk, because I'm like you, I know where you're going with that, because it's hard to set this rate today without the solid waste study back, and they're working on a plan. You know, I'm kind of with Commissioner Hale, let's leave it alone, because we don't know what those numbers look like, pre-study, post-study, budget workshops.
We know what we are now.
The answer to that, Mr. Chairman, is?
There's deadlines, I don't know what they are.
Yeah, and I would just have to get with who's taking over for Chad.
Ms. Blackman.
All right, anyway, I'll just have to check with county staff and see what those deadlines are, but there's a reason we're handling this now, as compared to putting it off and being one with the budget workshop, but I can get those deadlines due.
Fair enough.
Yeah, I just don't want the county attorney to come up later, and if you voted on it tonight, and him come up and say, well, you can't change your mind, I don't think that statute would apply in this case, I don't know. I don't know, you might want to ask it.
Is there two things on this, or just one?
They'll be, right, I think this is just a discussion, and then we got to go to the preliminary, and then we got to do the final, but tonight is mere discussion, so the number could be changed between now and the next two weeks from now.
And the same thing with the fire assessment.
Sir?
And the same thing with the fire assessment.
Yes, sir.
One thing I would like to just mention to you, I've heard, is a fee, a user fee a tax, or is it just a user fee? You're just being what you're used to.
On the assessments?
Yes.
I guess it depends on who you ask, if you ask some folks, everything the government collects is a tax.
It's a tax.
But on the legal side of things, it's a fee service on the assessments, because it's going directly, it's limited in what it can be used for, so solid waste assessment is going toward the solid waste department and that only.
But what y'all don't, seems to realize, is the public doesn't look at it that way. They're looking at it, we're paying for solid waste through an assessment, same with fire. And yet, they're still paying through taxes, our general fund revenues, to supplement both of them, that when implemented, they were to be self-supporting, that's why they did it. It has never done that. Commissioners don't want to raise the user fees. They're dedicated to certain things, that's all you can use them for. You can't buy fire trucks out of solid waste funds. You can only buy a fire truck out of the fire funds. You're limited, on EMS side too, because you can't use funds for EMS from the fire fund, or vice versa. Why don't you just make them self-supporting and quit supplementing them?
Mr. Hancock, I think?
I know, wait for the budget here.
No, 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 what I was going to say is, I think every commissioner up here understands exactly what you're saying, and we understand exactly how the public, we are the public too. You know, we're the public, we have family that are the public, I totally get it, I just ran a quick number here while you were talking, that 1.5, 1.498 million dollar deficit that would be under 235, and how many units, how many residential units do we have in Swan County, what's the number on that?
15, 16, 10, yeah.
Okay, so you say 1.5 million dollars divided by 15,000, say 15,000, that's 100 bucks. So, what you're telling me is, in order to make the solid waste department completely, let me finish, completely self-sufficient, we got to go up 100 dollars per household, minimum, to do that? That's a hard nut to crack.
You cut your budget 1.5 million dollars.
I understand.
Don't double dip, that's not what I'm asking you to do.
We can argue during budget workshops, that'd be a good place for it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you for your comment.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Perkins.
On this original question, is that we did it last year, we went back and changed it.
Yes, sir.
And changed it within that time limit.
There's deadlines.
Yeah, time limit, and where we are at.
That's right, that's right.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner White.
I don't want to raise the assessment on anybody, but I don't want to roll out here and wait another year or two years, and then we have to hammer them with, like you said, 100 dollars. So, I'm fine with it this year, but after we do this, I think we're going to have to take a hard look at this. We're funding this too much out of general revenue.
Well, and what you're doing, and I agree with you, Commissioner White, and I'm anxious to see the solid waste study as soon as possible, but what you're doing is, by funding it with general, something else is lacking, whether it be roads, or firing, I mean, whatnot, fire, any other department, I mean, you could go on and on with all of them, but anyway, Mr. Klepper's here.
Real quick, but before, I mean, we've showed we can cut that cost to stickers, you know, I mean, look at what that's reduced it, just right there. What are the compactors going to do? You know, what is the study going to show? I mean, it may be that we can, you know, lower it, I have to raise it, but lower it 50 dollars per household or something, I don't know. Or maybe that sustains it from here on out, that's the numbers I want to see.
That sounds good. Yes, that sounds good, if you can do it, to lower it a bit at all, but.
Yes, Mr. Klepper.
Yes, I.
Name and address.
Still, Mr. Klepper, 1458100, second pass, live oak. I know y'all are planning, as soon as this contract runs out, going with a more cost-effective way, and general fund carrying for a couple, is it a couple more years I'm right? General fund carrying it for a couple of years without a big hoopla, and still taxpayers' money, high group, Mr. Hancock, I guess, it's, you know, can't take one out of the other, but general fund you can, so seem like the smoothest way, just leave it at the 225, let this new garbage waste management, more efficient, less costly, smooth it out in the future, you know, so we take a 2.5 million dollar hit for a couple of years, and then we catch up in the long run, so. But I was waiting on item number 19, we went by that one without public comments.
We're on number 19.
That's what we're on.
We're on 19. Oh, okay, then that isn't one I wanted, I wanted 18.
Well, my bad, under general business, anyone's welcome to come up there at any time, I think Mr. Hancock came without limitation, but my bad for not extending one, so we're under 19, anyone from the public.
I don't know that it necessarily will change the outcome, but I think it's important, and I assume somebody's read this, I hope, and there was more to it, and I only, I don't have it printed out, but there's some assumptions that that Ms., whatever her name is, Cherry, is making, and she's assuming, her assumptions are, their services and related fee estimates are based on several assumptions. All data required to perform this stated procedure is readily available. Well, I personally made some requests from our county, and it wasn't readily available, all right, and it cost me hundreds of dollars to access them because they weren't readily available, and I needed about five or eight sheets, and I wound up with actually about this much, so it wasn't organized, so my immediate knee-jerk reaction to this is that, and there's more to it, down at the end, she says if this ain't readily available, then she could charge more than that 20 grand plus 20 percent, and it says, she also assumes that county personnel are knowledgeable and available, providing necessary information in a timely fashion, that's still, I'm still on the same note that it's made, and another assumption she makes is that procedures will not validate the accuracy of financial statements nor constitute an audit of internal controls over financial reporting. So, she's got her a whole big gray area there, that, just like I object to uncapped salaries for those elite individuals in the county, I object to y'all just not negotiating a better contract for the taxpayers of this county, I think y'all ought to, I mean, if somebody comes to y'all with an offer, maybe y'all do, maybe y'all got more money than me, somebody makes me an offer, I do some research, and I counteroffer, I don't think anybody ever done any business for me would say otherwise, and I rarely pay the asking price, just me, and this is me, right here, I pay somebody, some, all of the money goes off, and over this way, I pay some of it, so, and it frustrates me to watch it not be negotiated and, you know, diligently researched, if somebody's already looked at this, and it's already been discussed, and I apologize for that, but I just, I hadn't heard it, and it sounded like she's getting what she asked for, and I don't know if that's the best deal for us.
Well, I believe that, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Scott, but there's been multiple negotiations, and this is kind of where we ended up with it, there was some back and forth on that, I do believe.
Was it discussed about all these assumptions she's making?
We're going to let the county attorney iron that out before we execute and make sure.
I can answer the question.
Okay, go ahead.
The service that's being provided here is fundamentally, they can call it what they want, because they don't want to say it's an audit, but it's an auditing service, so they're going to say, listen, on the front end, we're proposing this contract, but we're going to, you're going to have to provide the data to us, work with us to make sure you're going to get it to us, if we have to pull teeth to get it from you, we reserve the right to go after and increase the charges. That's just a blanket statement of, everybody's going to cooperate and give it to us and legally, but fundamentally, that's what it means. So, there's nothing about that language that scares me about it. You know, and fundamentally, what the cost basis is on, it's, in lawyer speak, it's a contingency firm contract, contingency fee contract, so.
With 20 grand upfront?
Well, it's 20 grand upfront, I'm not arguing with you, I'm not going to pretend that's not a lot of money, so the first 100,000 dollars that they air quotes find, they get that, we get that credited against it, and if it doesn't work out, then yes, but either way, it's going to be a third-party audit, which is something that unto itself costs a significant sum, but in addition, if it finds, and the potential is certainly there, because we've not had a service like this before, if it finds a significant sum of money, it may ultimately result in a significant amount of money to the county as well. So, I just, so you're aware, Mr. Klepper, it's not that thought hasn't gone into it for what's ultimately presented here, but your thought process is, I think, a good one, but there's a reason, as the county attorney, those assumptions didn't bother me, I'm just, because you basically have to assume, if you're going to enter into a services contract with anybody, that both sides are going to cooperate in getting one side what they need.
I appreciate that, and you're right on most everything you just said for me, but usually somewhere in here, it says anything that's been said other than in this contract null and void, and it does say right here, nature of engagement, during this engagement, we will not audit or review financial information.
I get what there's, and that's their legalese of saying, if we find something real bad, I understand, but think about what they're doing, you're not wrong as to what they're saying, I'm not arguing with you, but at the end of the day, what they're presenting you with is, here's your financial outlook, here's where you could have gotten money, here's where money's outstanding.
I like that.
You can call that whatever you want, they don't want to call it an audit for their liability purposes, and I'm not going to argue with them on that score, but fundamentally, what we're going to receive is, so we get to do what we want with the data, they can choose to call it or not call it, whatever they want.
I just want y'all, sake or any, this 20, this 20 plus 20 wind up being 120 plus whatever X amount, I like the idea of helping us run a more efficient government, I'm opposed to that.
And kind of the thought process in talking with Mr. Scott with it is, if we were hiring somebody just to do the audit, you're going to pay a significant sum of money, and this is doing it on a contingency fee basis.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Klepper. Any other concerns, comments, or members from the public wishing to speak on this matter? All right, guys, what should we want to do? Number 19.
Like I said, I'm good with leaving it where that, until we get more information.
Are you looking for consensus tonight, or are you looking for motions? I mean, we got to go to, we got to do the public hearings, which will have motions in seconds.
We need to know what number you need to plug into the formal.
So, you're looking for consensus?
I'd say vote.
Vote.
I'll make a motion, leave it at its current state.
Motion by Commissioner Hale, leave it 225. Have a second by Commissioner Mobley, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Number, item number 20, discuss with possible board action determination of rates for the fire protection assessment program for fiscal year 2024, 2025. Mr. Greg Scott, number 20.
So, in your packets, and for the public, in the packets, was some information that we got new information today and tweaked it some, quite a bit, just so you're aware, currently, and Manny can get you copies if you need that, she brought a few extra, but apologize for the last minute. The current amount that we, the rate is 120 dollars. The amount that comes out of general revenue is 1.7 million dollars. For example, if it were 130 dollars, it'd be 1.5 million, so. Your call on what direction you want to go.
So, at 120, this document says that the shortfall is 1.7 million?
Correct.
Where are you taking that shortfall from?
General revenue.
I knew the answer, I just wanted to remind everyone. It goes from one pocket to the other. Well, general revenue seems to be the cow that we milk.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Commissioner White.
On the fire part, there's, is there not contingency money, can you put EMS money in the fire, but you can't do it the other way around, how does that work?
I'll let Eddie speak to that, just to make sure we're clear.
Yes, sir, to answer your question, you can take general revenue side money, which EMS is funded through general revenue, and pay for operations in fire, you cannot pay for EMS operations out of fire.
So, when we're talking about the general revenue, are we talking about from the EMS side to cover this, or we just talking about straight general revenue to cover this?
All the EMS is.
It's general revenue, I understand.
There's not a line for that, it's just.
Yeah, it's just all.
It's in there, yeah.
A lot of red ink.
Yes, sir. Any suggestions, folks? I mean, here's the thing, at the end of the day, and we still, I would say we still have some time about this, but at the end of the day, there's not one person in this room that is living cheaper today than they were yesterday, and there's not one person in this room that's living cheaper today than they were last year. Unfortunately, you know, there's not one person in this room whose house is less valued today than it was five years ago. Everything goes up, including values and cost, so, you know, at the end of the day, you can continue to suppress the assessments, but the cost isn't, you can't change the cost.
Absolutely.
And I think everybody here in the public understands that with their gas purchases, their grocery store bills, their insurances, I mean, it's unfortunate, and it's not fun, but none of us were living cheaper, we'll live cheaper tomorrow than we are today.
Yes, sir.
That's, that's the unfortunate part.
Mr. Chairman, what did we discuss last year, I know we had discussed, was it just 10 dollars? Does that sound right?
It was 10 dollars.
Was it 10 dollars?
Yes, sir, we just, we did kick that around, yes, sir. What's the pleasure of the board, gentlemen?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Commissioner White.
I, I say we just leave it, my opinion, we just leave it beef right now, but that, after we start looking at these numbers in a budget workshop, do we have time to reconsider this?
Yes.
But I want to look at some more numbers, I mean, I say leave it alone for right now, and till we can look at everything and see where it's at, that's a lot of red ink, folks.
I mean, yes, sir, Scott.
I'll just add, I don't disagree with Commissioner White, I mean, I don't. I'll just add, I don't disagree with Commissioner White, I mean, I, I don't think we need to change anything in the moment. I know Eddie and I have talked about this over the years. Obviously, our community's growing, and so do those services and needs, I understand that. But I also know that, although it don't sound like a whole lot of money to some, it, it means a whole lot to others.
Well, and I would agree with both of you, gentlemen. And what I would say to the public is, is like, you know, with that increase in values, yes, the, unfortunately, the government generates revenue by taxes or assessments, right? That's how you pay for all this stuff that we have, whether it be federal income, or state, or county, I mean, a spade, a spade. That, that's how they generate revenue. And we all pay them, you know, some pay more than others, some pay less, whatever, but we all pay them. And, you know, but I believe, like you talked about, our community is growing, our businesses are growing, this board has been investing a lot of money into infrastructure to grow the, to grow that tax roll, which will generate more avalourum taxes going into the general revenue, where we have been subsidizing solid waste and fire.
Right.
So, I mean, I think there's a valiant effort on the part of the board to be able to handle that out of general revenue. And I just wanted the public to kinda understand, and I'm sure most of y'all do, but that's really where we've been doing it, because we realize that, that in order to do that, I mean, one, it creates more revenue to, to afford better services, but also to try to maintain a lower residential, on our residential folks and our citizens.
Yeah, and those, those businesses will generate commercial fire assessment with the square footage, especially if some of those.
That's right.
Those large businesses that are coming in with.
I guess I was trying to explain.
Hundreds of thousands of square footage.
I was trying to explain the big picture, I might have done a poor job with it, but there's, if you.
The goal, the goal is to get the businesses in, the commercial square footage, to keep the residential assessments down.
That's it.
And let the commercial square footage.
Well said.
Hundred percent.
Well said. And, and again, I think that the intention of this board is, is as long as that is what's paying for it, and that goes in that, that general fund, and we don't have to keep messing with this, and that's fine, as long as those services are more than adequate to take care of our community. That's the goal of all of us.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Anybody from the public wishing to speak? I did a poor job inviting y'all last time.
Any further for me?
Anybody?
No, sir.
Sorry, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, guys. I got a, I think I have a record, is that a motion, Commissioner? A motion by Commissioner White to stay at one twenty. Have a second by Commissioner Hale to stay at one twenty. All, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. That was nineteen, what was twenty? That was twenty, I'm sorry. Oh, okay, item number twenty-one, presentation by the Board of County Commissioners. All right, folks, me being the chairman, I drew the short straw in getting to present this project to y'all. I am excited, I'm anxious, I'm nervous, all in the same, if you can be that. So, we're gonna talk about Project Summit. Some of you may have heard this name bouncing around in the community. I think it's a really huge project for our community, could be extremely beneficial to our community. But I'm gonna dive into that, and I got Ms. Chris, so we do have a PowerPoint, and Chris and I will try to stay in sync with each other. And there's one over here facing you guys, can all of y'all see that on both sides of the room? Everybody good? Okay. So, Project Summit. Project Summit started based on Hurricane Adelia. This originated due to Hurricane Adelia, and as you all know, we sustained tons of damage in the community from Adelia, both physically and probably mentally as well. There you see some poultry houses that were pretty much demolished. I believe that is First Baptist Church at Donald Park, and you see the damage there. There's a residential neighborhood inside Swan, all these pictures inside Swanee County. But, you know, one thing that, that, that I was very proud of during this was what we all witnessed. And what we witnessed was neighbors helping neighbors, people helping people, humans helping humans, you know. It, it didn't matter, grudges were dropped and lost and forgotten about, and everybody was helping everybody, and that, I'm proud of that, I'm proud of Swanee County and our citizens, and I'm proud of being a part of a rural community that can do that. It was quite remarkable. But, also, we had folks from across the state and across the country that were here for, for weeks. I've made a few notes here, Senator Simon and Representative Shoef, they were both here pre-impact and post-impact. They were calling for weeks, what do y'all need, what do your folks need, how can we help you, what do we need to do? That was remarkable on their behalf. The Ag Commissioner Simpson was here, and I'm sure there was other state officials. Kevin Guthrie, the Director of the Florida Department of Emergency Management, was here personally. There's a huge list of people, you know, from the state and across the state, in different municipalities and the country, that were here. FEMA was here, as you know, for months, and we were all very appreciative of their support. And honestly, I don't know if we could've done, I know we couldn't have done it without them, you know, so very appreciative of that. I think the next slide is, are some of the pictures. So, this is Swanee Valley Electric, an aerial view of what was their tent city. They put that up in a matter of a few days with a contractor that they're under contract with. And Chris, if you can keep playing that, that's pretty cool. They had, at one, one time, over two thousand linemen that were using this facility on a daily basis, restoring power to their lines. At a huge expense and a huge cost, but nonetheless, folks from across the country left their families to come help us. And that's pretty remarkable. I actually had the privilege of touring that a couple times, and pretty remarkable how they can put something together like that so quickly. Next slide, they brought in sleeping bunks. These are some of the bunks that were on site for the men, the men and women to sleep in. They had portable showers that were brought in. They had Jacksonville Fire and Rescue. This is just one of the municipalities that showed up with some of their mobile command posts, and, and some of those guys were here for several weeks and would rotate out. But lots of municipalities, I have a list here further back, so I don't start naming them all, I'll forget, so we'll just put a list there. But, folks, as far as Escambia County, which is Pensacola over here, with some of their services offered to us, and as far south as Miami-Dade and Monroe County, I do believe. So, as far south and as far west as you can go, and there's our neighbors to the far east, across the state, were here to help us. Verizon, we all know the towers went down, and were down for days, but Verizon showed up within, I think, a day, post-impact, Mr. Warren. Within a few hours, they were here, they set up their mobile command post outside the EOC, which enabled all of the first responders and, and our safety folks to, law enforcement included, to have cellular service. Without those mobile units, there would not have been cell service until the towers came back on, which took a few days. We had nonprofits show up, and again, I have a list, we had, you know, a redneck's favorite meal, country boy's favorite meal, barbecue. I mean, these guys showed up and were serving free barbecue meals, American Red Cross was here, Mercy Chefs. And Chris, there's a list next, and leave this list up for just a minute, but here's just a few, I think, I think this is all of them, but there, there, there were businesses. I remember Oregon Tool was at the Live Oak, Live Oak Fire Department, sharpening chainsaw blades, handing out free, free chaps, free chains, free files. I don't mean to pick on them, Lowe's, I mean, and all the municipalities, and not to mention our staff, I don't wanna cast any shade on our staff, Mr. Scott and, and your team, but those guys worked hours and hours trying to get our community back on their feet. But, you know, one thing that we kept saying to them, I know myself said it multiple times, I've heard every commissioner at some point say it to some of those agencies in Tallahassee and state, and even other communities, was, you know, if we can ever repay you, if our community can ever repay you, just call us. You know, we're so thankful for what y'all have done. Hopefully, we don't have to pay the debt, but if the debt ever occurs and you need payment, call us. We will be happy to repay that. And someone was listening. Someone heard that. And that, that person or that entity was the state of Florida. So, what the state of Florida realized, post-impact, was the need for regional shelter in north central Florida. So, the state of Florida has contacted Swanee County and said, hey, we need, the state needs a regional shelter in north central Florida. Why do we need a shelter? For instance, in Swanee County, I know Lafayette County, I know Taylor County, I know Madison County, pretty much all of our rural counties, the schools are their shelters. Kids were sleeping in hallways, kids were in the cafeteria, families, animals. It took a couple days to get extra cots here, we had people sleeping on the floors. This is Pine View Elementary, where we had cots lined up down the hallway, where actually kids were sleeping. Just great conditions considering, but definitely not favorable. With the schools closed, you know, I think schools were closed roughly a week. Tallahassee was pushing to get the kids back in school, rightfully so. With that being said, it's a huge burden on the school system. They have to go in storm prep mode, pre-impact, multiple days, cleaning cafeterias, ordering more food, you know, having teachers clean out classrooms. There's a whole organizational process for that to become a shelter. Post-impact, they gotta do it all over again, put everything back, get everything back in order, in just a matter of days. And, you know, what a burden that is. We had forty families in Swanee County that had to be relocated to Lake City, and were put up in motels at FEMA's expense. Those folks not only sustained damage, but were having to commute back and forth from their home, which they were trying to repair, to sleep with their family in the motel, or hotels, until FEMA had the trailer set up at the Spirit of Swanee. We were grateful for the park, accepting those trailers and hosting that. But those families were displaced for almost a month.
It's due.
How long?
It's due.
Yeah. And some of them, some of them are still living, some of them are still living at the park in those. But Lafayette County had sent folks to us because their shelters were overflowing and full, we were hosting Lafayette County citizens in, in our schools because they were full. So, that's just some of the reasons why we, why we need a shelter. But it needs to be better built, it needs to be stronger, it needs to be larger in size. Obviously, like I discussed, the surrounding counties, their current shelters are school, are schools also, and are honestly inadequate. And it relieves that burden off of the school system, of, of having to go into storm prep and then storm cleanup, as far as pre-impact, post-impact. And, and then the availability to, to the evacuees from other parts of the state. And what I mean by that is, part of our repayment to the folks that helped us, and being there for them should they ever need us. But that's the need. And honestly, like for me, when this was proposed to me was, hey, what do you think about this? How do you say no? You know, I, I was, if, if the state of Florida says that north central Florida needs a shelter, why wouldn't I want it here in Swanee County for our citizens, for the convenience of them to be here in Live Oak, or outside of Live Oak, for them? And then, also, it allows us to repay that debt to the folks that came and helped us, should their citizens need somewhere to go. How do you say no to that? So, if there's gonna be a, a shelter in north central Florida, for me, guys, I'd like for it to be in my vote. We have a letter here. Chris, you gotta catch up with me, I think. There you go, one more. And I'm gonna read this letter, it's probably too small for y'all to read or to see from the screen, but I'm gonna read it for you really quickly. This is a, a letter from the Director, Executive Director of the Florida Division of Emergency Management, Kevin Guthrie, Swanee County Board of County Commissioners. On behalf of Florida Division of Emergency Management, I want to thank you for the leadership you have shown in agreeing to host a regional shelter in Swanee County. Each disaster Florida experiences provides lessons learned in how we can continue to improve our disaster response capabilities. In the aftermath of Hurricane Adelia, we learned that a regional, regional shelter is necessary in the north Florida area. Had a regional shelter been available as Adelia approached, citizens of Swanee and the surrounding counties would have had a centralized, safe place to weather the storm. In the aftermath of the storm, it could have continued to house people on a temporary basis, basis lessening the burden on a local shelter such as schools. In the future, should a more powerful, powerful storm hit the north Florida area, a regional shelter would provide a safe harbor that older structures which serve as shelters in the surrounding counties may not be able to handle. Most importantly, the regional shelter will be available to all Floridians. When a disaster strikes elsewhere in the state, there is an urgent need for temporary housing for the displaced persons. Having such a large shelter accessible off Interstate Ten will, will be welcome relief for many people. For the benefit of the people of Swanee County, Swanee and the surrounding counties, and indeed, all persons in the state of Florida, the hosting of a regional shelter in Swanee County is a welcome and necessary development in Florida's disaster preparedness. We look forward to working with Swanee County, as together, we will be able to better assist our citizens in their most urgent times of need. Sincerely, Kevin Guthrie, Executive Director, Florida Division of Emergency Management. So, that was very powerful. But I'll go on to say, there's the why, what do you need? What do you need for a regional shelter? Tallahassee in the state says you need lots of land, and you need easy access to the interstate. So, with, with those two characteristics Tallahassee said we needed, staff and sought out to seek available parcels close to the interstate that met those criterias. And what we found, and, and have received the blessing of the state of Florida, is this, is this property. So, this property is three hundred and ninety acres, it is roughly, the slide, Chris, it's three hundred and ninety acres in size, it's easily accessible from the interstate, it's roughly a quarter of a mile north of the Bizi Bee with a one twenty-nine frontage, which puts it very close to the interstate interchange. Swanee has, Swanee County with the state's, with the state's approval, has secured a contract to purchase this property. Now, the question that a lot of folks ask is, what are you gonna do with the shelter when there's no storm? And honestly, for us, the answer is that, or for me, because I haven't had a chance to speak to all you guys, is, is honestly, like, no one really knows yet. You know, not until you buy the property, do you know what, you know what the house is gonna look like, or what, what you're gonna do with it. But we can't plan for anything until the property is secured. I mean, and anything more than that, potentially just wasted money, in my opinion. But, what the state of Florida did do, is they sent us to Pasco County and said, here is a regional shelter in Pasco County, myself and staff members have toured this facility. They sent us down there to see what other counties have done with a regional shelter. This one's in Pasco County, I forget what, what city is that? Or town, there's several, right? Wesley, it's north of Wesley Chapel, just north of Wesley Chapel. This is Wiregrass Ranch Sports Campus. You can see the front, I'm not saying that our building will look like this, I'm not saying our building will be this large, this is just an example of what Pasco did with their regional shelter. There's an aerial view of it, obviously, kinda give you an idea of size. There is a backup one. There is now a six or seven-story motel located where the blue fence is on the left side of the picture. There's the green space for supplies, additional trailers, linemen, whatever needed during, during a storm when it's activated a shelter. There's fields all behind it and to the right of it, with the green space for those types of vehicles or, or supplies to be parked. Next slide, this is the indoors, indoor part of it. So, Pasco has multiple sports venues there, basketball, volleyball, pickleball, wrestling, gymnastics. And I don't wanna get into everything that they do, because I don't know that, I'm not saying that that's what we will do, but they use it as an indoor sports facility. It, it generates a significant amount of revenue back into their budget, which goes into their county's budget. There will be economic development, or the economic development around Wiregrass, they have seen an explosion of retail space, restaurants, multiple hotels, and a vast. They have seen an explosion of retail space, restaurants, multiple hotels, and a vast array of others. And that particular, and I may misquote this, but that venue is booked out 24 months on a, in advance on a daily, on a week, on a week, every weekend, they're booked out 24 months in advance. That's how far booked out they are on tournaments of different sports. So the economic impact could be very large for our community. Who's going to pay for the shelter? The state of Florida. So the state of Florida has said, if you host it, we will pay for it. Who owns it? Swanee County. And operates. We own and operate, and revenue generated from it would be ours. How much is the land and how, how's it going to be paid for? Go ahead, Krista. The purchase price for the property is $5.5 million. How are we going to pay for it? In the 2024, 2025 budget, the governor has already signed off on and approved a $2.5 million allocation, which you can see, that is a line item out of the state of Florida's budget. There's 2.5 million toward the purchase of the property. Again, that has been signed by the governor. The additional funding, there's $4.5 million that has been earmarked with the state revolving loan fund. And the good thing about that fund is municipalities that use it, you're able to determine and set your own repayment plan. So we have tentatively asked, so basically, we don't have to repay it until the project is generating its own cash flow. And the answer to that was yes, that is correct. So basically, there's your funds to purchase it. With the repayment plan, obviously hasn't been negotiated yet, but I assume that we will get a favorable answer on those and not have to repay until the generator rates on revenue. So what's next? Due to the size of the purchase, this is the meeting where we are, there has been NDAs, which are non-disclosure agreements that have been signed on this thing. So this is, this is where those agreements are gone. And now everyone in the community and the public is aware of the state's plan, Swanee County's plan. We will have to advertise, due to the size of the purchase, a public notice. And to meet those time requirements, I believe that the actual vote on, to purchase the property will be on, at the August 6th meeting, meaning to, to be able to meet the Florida statutes' time requirements on the public notice. What do we know? Today, we know three things. We know the location of the property, how we're going to pay for it, and the building will serve as a regional shelter. Beyond that, as far as the sports venues hosted, if it'll even be sports venues, if it'll be, we truly don't know. Post-August the 6th is, depending on how that meeting goes, will determine, and I guess kickstart the, the planning of what the building will be used for under blue skies. Gray skies, we know it's going to be a regional shelter. Blue skies, meaning no storm. What are we going to do with it? So honestly, guys, I mean, this is the first time we've been able to talk about this. I was, I was proud that Swanee County was asked. I was honored that we were asked. I felt obliged to say, yes, we will do this with, with their, with the state, their, their help financially, obviously. But I'm just proud that the state had confidence and we had the opportunity to say yes, to put a shelter. There's going to be one. Why wouldn't we want it in Swanee County for our folks? If, if one of my family members gets displaced, I don't have to drive two, three counties over to, to see him or take him, potentially needed supplies. So y'all, that is Project Summit. That's a, that's a big project that, that the county's been working on for a few months now. And it all came about due to Hurricane Adelia. The last thing is, is how could this fall apart? And what's the worst case scenario? And honestly, I always like to leave those parts to the lawyer. That's what he's paid to tell us. So, Mr. Morrison, I will pass the, the gap, or the pass the mic to you and let you explain to us and everyone in the room, what's the worst case scenario?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. You'll note I didn't say thank you. So really, there's, the worst case scenario is this. There's two ways this doesn't go through. If you guys vote it down on the 6th, then it's over, it's done. That's how it falls apart. The real worst case scenario in terms of what could happen is if, you know, purchasing the land is just step one of, I think, what everybody understands will be a multi-step process to get to the end, whatever the end is going to be. So, and everybody's been very clear at both the state level as well as on the county level in dealing with the state, that the state of Florida is going to be the entity that ultimately funds the capital project of building whatever this shelter turns into. So truly, the worst case scenario is we purchased the property and then something happens at the state level and there's decisions made to not fund the project, right? So now we're left holding the piece of property. So were that to happen, you know, just impact out how that would play out, is we would have multiple options on how to sell the property. If we wanted to, we could sell the property. We do have, as required by the statute, two appraisals, both of which, which say we're getting the property at or below market value. So if we simply were to turn around and sell the property, we would replay, repay that four and a half million dollar loan, and we would be able to, for lack of a better phrase, pocket that two and a half million dollar grant that went towards the purchase price. So because that was a grant, worst case scenario, we sell the property and Swanee County gets to keep the two and a half million dollars that the state had allocated towards the purchase price. I do know that the, that the appraisals did not consider, you know, the very, very recent sales of real property down on that part of the county, as we all know, just an acre near the interstate just went for a million dollars. So, you know, again, if it doesn't work out, we could sell some or all. It just depends on what we want to do. But the way I see it, worst case scenario, will be out the, you know, what's been a significant staff effort here, but Swanee County will be to the good two and a half million bucks. So that's how I see it.
Thank you, Mr. Morrison. Fellow commissioners, any, anybody, any comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Commissioner White.
Wow. What a, what an opportunity for Swanee County. I mean, I was involved in this as, I was at the end of my chairmanship before you took over, we started discussing all of this. And it's just been a no-brainer for me from the get-go. The piece of property, I mean, it just speaks for itself. I just see the economic development for Swanee County here, and we were just talking about how are we going to cover these deficits and, and our fire assessments and our garbage. And so maybe, you know, this, this is, it's going to go a long way towards that. I mean, it's going to take a little time, but it's a great opportunity for Swanee County, in my opinion. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Commissioner White. Anyone else want to comment?
I just echo, Mr. Chairman, echo what Commissioner White says, and I think it's a great opportunity for this county and to have this. And we have risk with it most anything, but you can't, you can't lose with it. And I think on, on the backside as well is, that's going to have to draw the other businesses in to have this regional shelter here that's showing that we're more equipped. And I think it would be a great move.
Yes, sir. I would agree with both you gentlemen. Anyone else?
I'll just, Mr. Chairman, I'll just add to what both commissioners said. I mean, I just thank you to the state of Florida for recognizing us. I mean, what an opportunity to kind of be a leader in our community and neighboring communities to offer such a facility. You know, I, I get it, I look at the economics side of it, but the thing I focus on is the safety of our people, safety of our community, and, and place for those entities to come in here, those different power companies and places like that, to have a place to, to get together, to get things in order, and to go out and start putting our lives back together. I mean, that's just a, that's a huge thing. We, we've never had anything like that. They were all over the county. I'm thankful they were, but they were staging here and staging there. And, you know, it was, it was a bit of a turmoil there for a while, but yeah, I agree with everything.
Yeah, I mean, and I failed to mention in my slideshow, I mean, some of the, the high school parking lot was, was a campground for a lot of our volunteers and some of the services. Even after school went back in, I mean, those folks were there for weeks and the senior, the senior parking lot was, was utilized as sleeping and shower quarters, you know?
And they had to move when school.
And, and, well, they, they were, they end up staying there a little bit longer, I think, but yes, school was in, and then they end up having to relocate what was left and just, just, a venue like this would allow a lot of this to be a one shop, not all of it, but a lot of it to be a one-stop shop.
Right.
Mr.?
Yes, sir, Commissioner White.
Well, and also, by us buying that biggest, that bigger piece of property was we, we, the county now has control of that piece of property. It's not going to be a hodgepodge. We talk about controlling growth in this county. Well, our idea's always been to, to do the interchanges, the, and to keep a lot of the growth at these interchanges, well, this is accomplishing that fact as well, is to not keep, and, and you keeping everything where it needs to be, as far as I'm concerned. But that's just a plus to it as well, that we have control of what goes there and, and how it happens. And if it's in the private sector, not that I'm against the private sector, because I am a private sector guy, but in some cases, it's better for the government to have a little control over something like this than not. So it's my opinion.
So, so guys, I'm just going to close with, with.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to make clear too, and just on the, understanding the impacts of what happens if we say no, just so everybody's on the same page. As the executive director of the Division of Emergency Management made clear in that correspondence, the decision's been made that a shelter's coming to north Florida. So really, the question is, is it going to be in Swanee County or not? I mean, because if it's not going here, then it's going to go to one of our neighbors. We just get first crack.
I don't think, I don't see how you say no as, as, one, the opportunity, but also, like I said before, is the amount of folks that came, that came to help us and, and still help us at, at the state level on a daily and weekly and monthly and yearly basis. And how do, how do you tell those folks to help you? No, we're not willing to do that. I, I don't, I think that's a hard sale to say no to those folks. So that's just where I'm at on it. You know, we'll be talking about this a lot, I'm sure, between now and August the 6th. So I'm proud about it.
One other matter, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, before we close out of this agenda matter. One of the things that you did bring up, because we've had to keep it under wraps, because it was, it's been an economic development project, we've done a lot of talking to the state about that four and a half million dollar revolving door loan fund. But we formally will need actually board action to authorize county staff to formally execute the documents to go forward with procuring those loan funds. So we'd like, we need to do that between now and August the 6th. If the, if, so basically, what we need to do is, I'm asking the board for board action, authorizing county staff to review and execute any and all documents necessary for that revolving door.
That's just a request. That's just a request.
It's a request. So on the 6th, if the board says no, we don't take out the loan. But this way, the money's in place. So that way, if the board says yes, the trigger can be pulled very quickly to.
So this is just authorization for the official request that, hey, now that the cat's out of the bag, for lack of better words, we are officially asking for that, those funds that you have told us that we could get. If we choose not to purchase the property on August the 6th, then we won't execute the loan documents and we won't take the money.
Correct.
Right?
Yeah. Does that accomplish what you needed to?
The, I would suggest that, you know, allow staff to apply for the loan. We probably, because of timeline, may need to execute the agreement. But if we were to execute it and we don't, if we don't move forward, we wouldn't be in debt, we just, we give them back the money.
So I, I think that if we're going to do this tonight, I think the motion needs to state to authorize staff and county attorney to apply for those funds strictly for the funding of Project Summit. Should Project Summit not be purchased, those funds will not be requested.
Or, or would be immediately returned.
Or immediately returned.
That'll be.
But only to be used for Project Summit.
Yes, sir. But because of the timeline of turnaround, we need it, we're going to be closing in the month of August, and since the meeting's on August 6th, we just need to have the funds available.
Yes, so for the public's knowledge, basically, if we vote on August the 6th, the closing is shortly thereafter in the same, in the same month. So if we vote yes, and we haven't done any of the loan documentation, much like buying a house. If you say yes, I mean, before you go shopping for a house, you get pre-approved for the loan. So that the seller, you know, you can purchase it in a timely manner. So I think this is the same scenario, hey, let's reach out to them now that the cat's out of the bag, let's make the official request, yes, we would like to borrow the money. If we don't buy the house, we're not taking the money.
Additionally, we have had an offer on the property for quite a while. The, the owners have been very gracious to hold it for us for this purpose, and we need to move on it.
Fair enough. Gentlemen?
I make a motion to approve staff to apply for the funds for Project Summit. Mr. Chairman, say.
Thank you, Commissioner White. I have a motion by Commissioner White, I have a second by Commissioner Perkins. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Is that, Mr. Morrison, is that all that you needed for that?
Yes, sir, just so we can make sure that if the, if the board votes for it on the 6th, we can move on that quickly.
Yes, sir. Mr. Clepper, you want to speak?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I was waiting for a public call. Moses Clepper, 1458100, second path. I just got a couple of messages that, and hypothetically, I wouldn't be here if the, the race between Gillum and DeSantis had gone the other way, I wouldn't be here. And if, if, if he had, if Gillum had have won that race and everything else was the same tonight, except for that fact, the, the possibility, just for those of y'all and y'all couldn't think I'm talking conspiracy stuff, when it's come to me, I, I consider that's probably going to be part of the thought. But, you know, during the pandemic, I remember real well, we were talking about this partly because this whole thing's part of that. But there was a lot of discussion about mandatory quarantine and all. And, and, you know, I mean, there's all sorts of stuff been said about it. I'd like to see some language in this agreement that, Mr. Lynn, you said, Commissioner Lynn, you said that Swanee County will own this property, but it, it usually when state or government, or federal government puts some money in it, they put some strings with it. And I'd like to see some language in here that this facility couldn't be used for a mandatory quarantine facility.
That, that, I mean, we could definitely consider that. I mean, like, like, like I said earlier, we are way early in the game. This was just the initial, I guess you could say unveiling of the project. We, we got to do the public notice in the papers, the actual, to buy the property won't occur until, the vote to buy the property won't occur until August the 6th. The contract reads, I forget the date, but it's later in August to actually close on the property, should we vote yes to buy it? Well, we, I mean, we're, I would say you're probably several years away from erection, but we got a long way to go, but I, I do understand what you're saying. But we got a long way to go before we, you know, get to, get to that point.
Well, I might not be here in several years. I might be dead and gone, so I'd want to make sure to get out of there.
You planted the seed. Yes, sir.
Aye.
I don't have a lot of answers, but if there's anyone else have any questions, I'll certainly entertain them or try to answer them. But this was really just informational, you know? I was excited to let this out and tell you guys about it. So we will move along. Ms. Chris, you got a comment?
Sure.
You sure? Thank you, Ms. Chris, for your help on that. She's always quiet as a mouse. That's why I asked her, she wanted to say something, I already knew the answer. Number 22, additional agenda items. Mr. Scott, are there any additional agenda items? None. Number 23, administrators' comments and information. Mr. Scott?
Just want to give you some updates on some projects. I know that y'all are, have asked about certain ones. Canoe Road 49, from 2/8th to Canoe Road 252. The bid documents are under review and will be advertised by the end of the month. Tonight, y'all approved that Locklear will be the CEI for that project. On 68th Terrace, North Florida Professional Services, according with the C. Live Oak, finish up the water and sewer design and roadway design for that to get ready to go out to bid also. Or to go out to bid. 76th Street, Locklear Association, Locklear and Associates were recommended tonight and approved for CEI work for that project. Anderson Columbia was the low, low bid on that. And, um, we'll be working with the contract, getting a contract with Anderson Columbia and also agreement with the CEI firm as well. We should be seeing activity on 76th Street in August. So, uh, be moving forward with that. 80th and 139th, thermofastic, uh, the, uh, painting is, and signage is yet to be done. Other than that, the road is complete and we just have to get it signed off by DOT once that is done. The, um, Canard Road 250, uh, from the bridge, sort of the bridge to 130, I'm sorry, 193rd. DOT should be sending us an agreement for the design in August of this year. Still, uh, the clearing, uh, timber clearing for the, um, site for the, the treatment plant, for the water and sewer plant should be, uh, starting, uh, mid-July. I think they're already out there doing a few things now. And also, I'm sorry, that's the timber clearing for the Cat, the Cook property should be starting mid-July. Clearing grubbing is, some activities are already happening there now. So, just want to get a little update on that. Lastly, I wanted to let you be aware of one other thing. As you're probably aware, I'm sure you're aware, we had a selection committee to replace Eddie. Eddie has served the county for 25 years, done a great job for the county, very proud of what he's done for us. He's retiring. He went off to bigger, better things and was appreciable and really appreciate his service to the county and the citizens. I know his heart is big about, um, what has accomplished in those years. He was a single guy on the fire, him and one other guy on the fire truck back in the day when it started and been here for 25 years to help this thing grow. So hats off to Eddie. We did have a team, uh, doing interviews to replace Eddie, um, or try to replace Eddie. The, um, the Public Safety Director for Levy County joined that team for us. Mitch Harrell, Jimmy Norris, Economic Development, and myself served as the, as the, uh, the panel that did the interviews, had some really good candidates. And just letting you know that, uh, we made, or I made an offer today for, to Dan, or Daniel Miller from Lake County to be our next fire chief. He accepted the position and he's very anxious to, um, to come work for us. He got motivated by the Norris teamwork speech. But, um, uh, it's interesting that, uh, Daniel started with Lake County whenever they were infants also. Started as a volunteer and helped work along and grow, helped grow it also there as well. But, um, he retired after 25 years, a little over a year ago. And did some private stuff and, and started his own business. But he's anxious to get back in the fire service and come be part of Swanee County. That's all I got.
Okay. Well, thank you with that. I assume that at some point you will be bringing Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Miller around to, um, introduce him to public staff?
Yes.
Whoever.
And that's pending background checks, drug screenings, you know, physical, all the, all the particulars that we do for everybody. So.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Scott, do we have anybody in-house?
We had three candidates in-house apply and unanimously we thought that Mr. Miller would be the right candidate for the time.
One of them, uh, the Duggan Center.
Right.
You going to check on that? Do you have a chance to find a thing on the Duggan Center?
No, sir. That, that isn't one of the grants we're working, that Shannon secured. Moving forward with that, doing paperwork on that. But, um, we're looking at budgets today and I saw the line item for, maybe we had it set aside. So I've got a meeting set up in, I think, next week with all our folks that do projects to see where we are, why aren't we further along, or what assistance they need from me. So, I'll, I'll follow up with you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for asking again.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Perkins. Thank you, Mr. Scott. Is that it, Mr. Scott?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Last item on the agenda is item number 24, Board Members' Inquiries, Requests, and Comments. I think we started with Commissioner Hale last, last meeting, so I'll put, uh, Commissioner Perkins.
Yes, um, Ron did a great job out at, uh, the, uh, NEPD meeting up in Stark. Did a great job of representing the county, joining over there and, uh, great job. And also to mention it on this, on tomorrow, the 19th. And we signed a proclamation and we do have Mr. Ford here, uh, going to be hosting the June, Juneteenth there at the Duggan Center in, here in Live Oak. So I'm going to say, and that's supposed to, Ford, I want to speak to it, but we're inviting you out and be out to, to Duggan Center for a Juneteenth celebration that will start on Wednesday, which will be tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
And on the 22nd, they will also have it at the Coliseum, uh, to conclude at the Coliseum. And I forget the times there, Mr. Ford, but you might throw those times there for me. Would they have the time, they get 12 to 2 and doesn't that, from 2 to 6 or something like that? Thank you, sir.
The times, Mr. Ford, you remember the times?
We have, we have, uh, think up.
Oh, never mind, he's got a.
For the, uh, attorney has it right here for us. On Saturday, June 22nd, 2024, festival time from 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM. Bring your lawn chair and tent and come out and enjoy the festivity. Have a live DJ, uh, free food, free bounce house, karaoke, entertainment, poetry, spoken word, awards, basketball tournaments, li, uh, line dancing, Soul Train Line. It's kind of like, got quite a bit going on there, so come in and enjoy yourself.
Now, I want to see you in that line dancing, Commissioner Perkins.
Mr. Lynn is going to do that.
Thank you. I got, yeah, he can do it. I got, hey, I have two left feet, so I'm not good at that.
Mr. Fury, what's the score of the Seminole game?
FSU won 95.
Hey, go Nones.
Also, just want to say also to, uh, again, we're thankful to Max. You know, he, they, as our inspector, talking to me, he's done, got rid of all the provisions. Now, now he's a full pledge, uh, official, building official. And they have that, uh, brotherhood between the counties. Well, Mr. Howard was about to retire, but now he's going to work it four days a week and off on Fridays. And he's off on vacation for a couple of weeks now and needs some inspection done. And I called Max. Max did do an inspection for me, but virtually did inspection for me. We would have had to wait another week to get a foundation foot up for. But thanks to Max, he did it for me virtually, got it taken care of. So, and he did say, uh, Mr. Scott and Ronald have did him a great job, so he's satisfied and, uh, so he's good to go.
I, I'm glad that when other communities call that we're, our, our folks are willing to help them out because it seems like in the past, a lot of those communities have been willing to help us and we've needed it. So I'm glad that Mac was able to, to do that.
He pinch hit, did a great job.
While you're talking about building department, just so you're aware, a second official, or not a second official, second inspector has been hired or in the process now. You still got to do some testing and such, but, um, so we're, I mean, we had another office staff person start a couple of weeks, last week, I believe it was. So we're trying to get that apartment up where it needs to be. So, I know that, um, everybody's got concerns about, um, efficiency and, and everything, but, um, we're doing our due diligence to get it rolling.
Good deal, good deal.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Perkins. Commissioner Mobley?
Lot to say thank you. We had a guy called the other day. He was very impressed with, uh, Mr. Lee Aversol at Veteran Services. He was thanking us for the quality of service that he received from his office. Appreciate it and, and having.
I hear lots of compliments about Mr. Aversol.
And then, uh, another thing, they're going to be having for the little Roberts girl that got injured. They told me to announce that they're going to do a fundraiser for her. Uh, the smoked rack of ribs for $30 is going to be in Brantford on the, uh, June 24th, 2 to 5, at the Love and Care. They wanted you to preorder on the 24th.
You got a number for the public, a preorder number or?
There is.
What is that?
352.
352.
210.
210.
1120.
1120. That is to preorder a rack of ribs for $30 for a fundraiser for Ms. Janet Roberts?
Yep.
Okay. That's on. 352, 210, 1120. That will be on June the 24th from 2 to 5:00 PM, $30 for a rack of smoked ribs down in Brantford. If you dial the number, I'm sure they'll tell you the address and where to pick those up. That is a fundraiser for Ms. Janet Roberts who was in a, uh, pretty bad farm accident.
It's good to see Mr. Bart. He's back in action. He's back with us this week.
He's still as ugly as I remember, but I'm glad to see him back.
Remember to keep our Pastor Wes Tansley in your prayers and happy birthday, Mr. Bo Hancock.
Oh, man.
Yes, sir.
We get to meet him.
That's all I get.
Age ain't helping your beauty either.
Can we sing Happy Birthday to him?
Nah, I'm glad for it. Commissioner Hale?
I'd just like to say, uh, as always, thank you to our employees. They have been working around the clock, it seems like, since the last storm that come through. I know we still got a long way to go. I want to let the community know that, uh, our folks are still working hard and I guess the state and EOC is working as well to try to get some of that debris up. So be patient with everyone. I know y'all was picking on Carissa and Mr. Bart. It was good to see you at church Sunday. I appreciate that. And Carissa doesn't speak a lot, a whole lot, guys, but she does sing well. I hear her sing at church, so.
Maybe she can sing Happy Birthday, Mr. Bart.
Yeah, she can sing Happy Birthday. And last but not least, and, and, you know, I try to always mention this, folks, we never know what our neighbors are going through. Always pray for one another, lift everybody up and, and do what we can, do the right thing, guys. Thank y'all.
Amen. Thank you, Commissioner Hale. Commissioner White?
Just echo what Commissioner Mobley had for Ms. Janet Roberts. Uh, that's, in case y'all don't know, that's Eddie Roberts down at Wet Farms in O'Brien. That's his granddaughter that, uh, got hurt in that accident. It's pretty serious. If you can help out, I know they, the family would appreciate it. Also, I mean, I'm just excited about the whole new project here we got going. Just couldn't be more, more proud of Swanee County and more proud of the people that make it happen. Not just us, but the staff and all the people that work hard on this stuff. It take, it takes a village, so I just want to be grateful to them. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner White. Yeah, I mean, getting to go last, you don't leave a lot to get to say, but yes, I'm very proud of Project Summit. I'm proud that, um, are there going to be some, some risks there? Sure, there's always risk, but, um, like I say, if a shelter's going in north central Florida, I, I prefer to be in our backyard for our people. I think that's a tremendous honor. I think it'll be a, when we get there, it'll be a tremendous economic benefit, um, to Swanee County for years to come. But good to see Mr. Bart here. FSU just won baseball games, so that's great. Y'all pray for Ms. Roberts. I know the details of the accident, but I'm not going to share them here, um, not publicly. But, and then happy belated Father's Day to all the fathers that were here. You know, in my opinion, homes are better with a father in them. So hats off, hats off to the guys on the make those sacrifices that it takes to do that, so.
Mr. Chairman?
I had one thing, and I was trying to think of the date and I was looking for it,
but June 29th, uh, 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM at the Coliseum. Myself and several other fine folks from our community are going to be in a dunking booth. So if you want to come out and try to dunk one of us, Mr. Bart, come on out. It's $5 for three balls and, uh, as crazy as I am, I'm probably going to pay for the first $20 worth to see who can, who can do it. So come on out.
I thought as cheap as you are, you're at least a hundred.
I was waiting on you to step up, sir. But it's, it's for a good cause. Miss little girl named Laney, she's needing some help and, uh, we're going to help raise some money for her.
Hundred percent. Good deal. Anybody, anything else?
Just wanted to share, go ahead, Commissioner. We're going to be hosting DOT. There's going to be a workshop for the surrounding counties to learn more about what they can do. When they asked us, did we, you know, who wanted to host it? We do. They do a lot for us. The relationship's getting stronger every, every day, but certainly we want to host that for them to kind of show off what, what products they've got. Maybe we can learn some things and maybe if they're sit and change fall out of the pocket, we're going to pick it up.
When is that?
I believe it's in August 22nd. It'll be at the Coliseum. So, uh, pretty, I'm, I'm very pleased that we're chosen to host that.
Okay, Commissioner Perkins, I'll leave you had a comment.
Just want to say, you know, we was talking about how our county is and now I'm just thinking about it when I heard, uh, Commissioner White had voiced that. Well, uh, you know, you never know what you're thinking hit home to you. And, uh, yeah, just a few days ago, a little young lady, 12 years old. My wife, my late wife and I raised up to her. She was about 10 and, and I had her for a little while and went back to her mother. Well, she got missed, she got missing. And, uh, she was going to put a, uh, thing out on Facebook. And Sergeant Wayne Kelly called me up that night and he, uh, went to work on it. We did find that she was safe, so she's back home, so I'm safe now. So just how, our county worked together to get things resolved, you know, just, just want to throw it out there. He was, uh, Sheriff Department did a great job and, you know, helped locating that young lady.
And we probably don't.
And, and the Police Department as well.
A hundred percent. Well, we probably don't thank, I mean, we thank them a lot, but we don't thank them enough, the county staff that, that work. I mean, you know, if you go on social media, you, you see a lot of negativity, but you also hear in the public, there's a lot of people out there that appreciate y'all, so, and we do too. So thank you to staff for all that y'all do, whether that be constitutional officers, employees, sheriff's office. I see one of their representatives here, property praiser or whatnot. I mean, those folks do a, they're human too and they do a good job representing Swanee County. So with all that, anybody else? All I need is a motion to adjourn. I'll take a motion by Commissioner White and a second by Commissioner Perkins. All in favor, aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Meeting adjourned.